I'd like to call the Claytonship Board meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance to flags in the back corner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thanks for coming everybody. Can you guys hear me okay in the back? I got this mic on. Is it good back there? Okay, um, roll call vote. Roll call, roll call please.
Joanne Shirkey, here. Cindy Valentine, here. Artie Bryson, here. Tom Kruger, here. Tom Fetter, here. Karen Straffan, here.
John Horvath?
John Horvath.
Absolute excuse. Okay. Uh, before we get going, I'd like to amend the agenda. Before I have, I received these today, four work orders for roads. Road work, I got them, received them from the county road. I'd like to make them 3B under the one work order that we have. And then also, we have our sanitary sewer collection system asset management program. Whoa. We have it on, and I'd like to make that actually 4B. It's basically along the lines for the water system asset management system program that we're going to be required to have completed by January of 2018. So, make a motion that we amend the agenda for those two items?
So moved.
Okay, we have support. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Motion carries. Alright, uh, bills payable. Entertaining a motion for bills payable.
Make a motion to approve the bills payable in the amount of $131,074.68.
We have, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
I've got a question. Looking at the fire department, for one month, the ferry fees are $552. I thought we had a, a fire department over here and one over there, so why is that so high?
Um, not real sure. We're gonna have to ask the chief. I know Cindy and I have been noticing that they are, they have been high.
Well, part of that is the safer guys, and we do get reimbursed for their ferry as part of their benefits. That's a benefit some that we have comes to more than.
Do you, do you know how much that is?
Not on panel.
Okay, 'cause I'm not gonna overlook that.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Tom Fetter?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Excuse me, everybody. Still got my cold. It's been like two months. Um, next we have, um, public hearings for soil removal permits.
Make a motion, we open the public hearing for soil removal permits at 7:34 PM.
Okay, we have motion and support to open the soil removal, public hearing for the soil removal permits, 7:34. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I now open the public hearing for soil removal permits. We have four of them on board, the same fours we've been doing for, I don't know, last three or four years. Uh, there's Robert Bryson. Uh, we have Westwood Lake, Phase 1 and 2. We have Silent Acre Farms and Blue Water Materials. Does anyone wanna speak on our public hearing for our soil removal permit? Tick tock, tick tock. Going once, twice. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close our soil removal permit.
So moved at 7:35.
Any support?
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support to close our public hearing for the soil removal permit at 7:35. Bob, you wanna say anything about the soil removal permits? Oh, you better. Okay, uh, any discussion on that motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone object? Motion carries. So, moving right along, we have public comments relating to any business on the agenda. Have any public comments on anything on the agenda? Hearing none. Our consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the board meeting of May 2nd, 2016, and the subnarciss and amended 41816 minutes. Reports, the check reports, assessing report, code enforcement, building and zoning report, police report, and the water report. Communications about the road watch and request from the assessor for continuing education for Barb and Sherry for $30.
Okay, we have motion. Any support?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I wanna pull out the amended minutes.
Amended minutes?
Yes.
Got amended amended minutes?
Yes, we have to amend the amended minutes. Uh, number four should read, "Motion by Fetter, supported by Shirkey."
Motion by Fetter.
Yeah, you guys discussed that, but I have my minutes from when I was there. I mean, sometimes both people say it at the same time, so I pick one of you guys. I can put both of them in there if it'll make you feel better, but...
Okay, I just remember it being Joanne. I know Karen talks quiet, but...
Alright, we'll get those amended. Check it out and get it amended. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Alright, the highlight of everybody's night, the supervisor's report. Let's see what's going on. Still working on the police station addition. It's going well. Uh, we're actually finishing electrical and probably gonna start the insulation in a day or two. And the end of the week, drywall's going up, so that's going along pretty good. Still been in the middle of the budget process. Actually, we have stuff today that kinda pertains to that. Uh, been also working on the phone upgrade for the township. Uh, they actually, we're looking at switching over to the new system towards the end of this week. And, uh, we're also working on the upgrades on the dispatch. Uh, there's been, actually with the police station addition 2 and the upgrades, there's been issues that we've had to work out and we're still on budget. But it's been an interesting journey. I think Chief Coach would agree with me there. But, uh, it's all, it's all worked out and on course. Had initial meetings, or had meetings with, um, uh, the unions and all the union negotiations. We have five unions that are all for contract right now. Uh, three of them, we have a tentative agreement, and we have meetings set up for the other two, and I anticipate no problems. Um, in fact, one of the, uh, the groups I have to meet with has the same union representative as one that we already have a tentative agreement, so they know exactly what's coming down the pipe. Movie in the Park, May 21st. This is May 21st, uh, I should have the exact time. I'm not, what did we figure out? I know it's dark, 8:30-ish, and, uh, we're gonna be showing Finding Nemo, and, uh, so should be fun. First time we're trying this in the park, and hopefully it'll go over well, and if it does, we'll have more. One of our insurance agents, does our liability insurance, SAF and SAF, he's sponsoring it. So, uh, that's a good thing. Uh, water, it's been a lot going on with water. Uh, we have a, we voted on doing an electrical upgrade in the, um, water plant about six months ago, actually about four months ago. If you recall, that was, uh, we're putting UPS and surge protectors on all the critical, things in the water plant, and it was quoted out for $58,000. And, uh, it's actually gonna be $7,800 or, yeah, $7,800 less. Uh, we found a little better, better way of doing it, and, uh, better, cheaper, faster. So, that's what we're doing. Next, over the next two years, we may have to replace two of our master meters that go between Elginak and Clay Township. We have three altogether, and we did replace one about four or five years ago. And it's in the contract. If it varies, 'cause we, we get it tested to make sure the percentage that it's accurate, and they calibrate it, but when it starts falling below 90% accurate, you know, we look at, uh, changing it out. And, uh, they're getting about there right now. So I'm anticipating this next budget year, we'll be replacing one of those master meters, and then the following year, a second master meter. Uh, let's see. We did receive our calculations on our look back on the water charges, what we do. We estimate what, what we think it should be, and then once we tabulate all the costs for running the water plant, we either have to pay a little bit more, or we get a credit. This year, we actually got a $10,890 credit. And, uh, I'm expecting, in fact, I thought I was gonna get them today, is our rates for what we have to buy with water from Elginak going forward this next year. Um, I'm hoping to have that this week, so, uh, that's again, another part, piece of the budget process for, um, for the upcoming budget year. At least for the water department. Excuse me. Also, I, it was kinda disturbing news. You know how we have, uh, in our water plant, we have, uh, there are multi-probes, and they basically check the water condition at the water that we're bringing into the plant to make sure there's no, uh, chemicals or changes in pH levels. It checks 29 different things, just to make sure we're, we're getting good water coming in. And, uh, and I'm a big advocate of that. I don't know, it was three years ago, four years ago, that was an issue, and I don't know if you remember, it was about $15,000 a year to, to actually have this system in place. And, uh, between us and Elginak, I'm, you know, the amount of people that water plant services, it works out to be 80 cents a year per person. And remember, I said, you know, there's some things you just don't talk about, you just do it 'cause it's right. Or for some reason, Marine City chose to take theirs offline this past year. So, I mean, it really shouldn't, doesn't affect us a lot, but it would be nice to know if there was an issue coming downstream, that we would know about it, it hits Marine City. Right now, there's one in Marysville. St. Clair Marine City doesn't have anything, but we do. And, uh, we're gonna, I intend to keep that online. Actually, Marysville and the Detroit Water Plant, they're pilot testing a new, uh, data collection system for our clean water. And, uh, uh, they're looking at, I'm not su, we don't have any numbers with the hardware it would cost. I, I would hope that there's some grant money available, if that comes, comes to, uh, to be a, you know, a chance that we could upgrade. But they're doing a test pilot on that right now, so it'll be interesting to see how that works out also. Okay. Roads. We're replacing culverts right now on Holland Road, probably about two weeks to, before we pave that. And, uh, we've been doing grading and putting gravel down on a lot of the stone roads throughout the township, and we do have four or five more work orders to approve coming up. And, uh, oh, I wanna thank the Boy Scouts Pack 222. A couple days ago, uh, they planted flowers in our flower boxes underneath the police signs, and while they're doing that, it was nice, I went out there and seen what he did and talking to him, so we gave the guys a tour through the police department, and they, they enjoyed that. We got to throw them in jail and take their picture, and, and throw them in the back of the police car and stuff, so that was a lot of fun for them, but I, um, I did want to, to commend them for doing that. Now, I actually wanted to tell everyone too, our, the township tax rate for our operations in Clay Township's actually is going down. It's part of the Headley, uh, amendment, and it's actually dropping from .5569 mils to .55, or, yeah, .5526 mils. This board would have the option to keep it the same, or actually, we could raise it up to 1 mil, but I definitely would, would be not for that. And I think we can just make things work with .5526 mils. Upcoming events, May 17th, that's tomorrow, there's a Clay, St. Clair County Road Commission meeting at the Clay Township Hall. That's at 7 o'clock. I mentioned Movie in the Park. June 4th on the mainland and on Harson's Island, June 4th and 5th is cleanup day, from 8 to 4. We're gonna be collecting e-waste from 9 to 2, anything electronics. And we'll put a trailer here on the island also, where if somebody has some electronics they wanna get rid of, we'll, you can drop it off here, and then we'll shuttle it over there. Usually, they come in with a semi, and we, the past two years, we just about fill that trailer right up. So that's a good program. And, uh, basically, you can bring anything you want to throw away. We ask that if you have refrigerators or freezers that the freeons remove safely from it, but we can take tires and, I don't know, Lance, is there anything we can't take?
The paint, the paint you need to make arrangements with the fire department.
Yeah, yeah, the paint, we, yeah, the oil-based paint, we take. If you have latex, we just, uh, you pour sand, you pop the lid, pour sand in it and dry it out, but...
Sand or kitty litter.
Sand or kitty litter. But, um, the oil-based or anything hazardous material, we have a hazardous material drop-off anyhow behind a fire department in the mainland. We're the only one in Southern St. Clair County that has that. But you can, uh, you can bring it, you know, Saturday or Sunday, or actually anytime, um, if you have any hazardous waste, you can take it behind the police or the fire department, and, uh, we'll properly dispose of it. And that's all I have for the supervisor's report. That wasn't too bad, was it? Alright, moving right along. New business. Uh, we have a quote for the police department, and it's half the police department, half township offices, for generator repair. It, uh, we had to kick it on this last week, and it didn't work. Coolant ran out, and it wouldn't start or keep running under load, and we needed to get the radiator repaired. So I have a, a work order for that, and this is the same company that we do, we have the maintenance contract with. We could've went out and got some more quotes, but I'm sure that would've been more than this anyhow.
Is this a result of it not being maintained?
It's a hole in the radiator. It's, I don't know how old it is, but, how do you...
15 years.
About 15 years old?
13.
13?
'Cause I see hoses, I see...
Right.
What this town is looking at, um, once they get into this and they have to remove the radiator, what they're saying is, you're...
Yeah, you don't wanna put the old ones back in.
In there for a nominal fee, replace the hoses, the belts, everything while you're in there.
Do it there while you're there.
Do you know when the last time they were out?
Uh, twice a year they come out of service. And I think the last time, it was probably January, but with the wet conditions, everything like that, it really, you couldn't really tell. But this leak seemed like it started slow, but then started building, or getting a little bit heavier as it went. So right now, we're just keeping an eye on it, uh, but it's definitely something we gotta address right now. We don't want something to let loose on us.
So we're gonna be splitting this between the township and the, and the...
Right.
Okay.
Any more discussion on it? Hearing none. All, well, I need a motion.
So the total cost is 2747.59, but I only see one line item here, so how are you gonna, how are you gonna do that? This is your one, this is...
The mic rode it up, and I think you just assumed that the police department would take the burnout, but it does.
You wanna pay for all of it?
No, we'll split it all.
Well, uh, it'll be nice to split it with them.
Yep. Now, it goes, we both use it, so we're gonna split it between building maintenance, between the two funds.
I make a motion that we pay Cummins Bridgeway the amount of $2,747.59 for parts and labor to repair the generator, to be split between, it'd be general and line item 20700932.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, I mentioned in my supervisor's report last meeting, I got a, a quote for going forward with our auditors. We are working at bringing back the bank reconciliation in-house, and even so, I myself think it's wise and prudent, um, to have a quarterly review from our auditors, just to make sure that, check our funds, that they're balancing out, and to make sure that there's no issues, the bank recs are done, and, uh, they actually gave us a quote for doing this. Uh, it'll be actually three quarters, because the, the fourth quarter will be our regular audit anyhow. And, uh, I, uh, I would like to know that, you know, we're not, our, our accounting's not getting out of whack in any way or shape or form, and this will prevent that.
It would've been nice if they would've just charged us $100 an hour like they were instead of, um, it says that would've take, it would take eight to 12 hours at a cost of $1,500 per quarter. I would've rather have seen them charge the hourly rate. We would've probably saved some money if it's all...
Yeah, but if they find something though...
Well, I know, but that would be above and beyond, but we'd pay that anyway. Would, no, I guess not, okay.
No.
Wait a minute, it says this speech does not include any assistance that the township's personnel may need, need to resolve, uh, any problems that are identified during the assessment, so it wouldn't include it anyway.
Yeah, I don't know if, if their rate would be $100 an hour for the people that are going to actually be doing the work. What is Tammy? She's over...
I know, but that's what we estimated the cost.
Well, that was rough.
Okay.
But I myself think it's, it would be wise if the board continues to do a quarterly, just to make sure everything is on, uh, on the up and up. So I entertain a motion.
So this is gonna be the only work that they do for us?
Except for the audit. And if this all checks out, they kinda verbally gave me a, a guestimate, the audit would be the high 20,000s, which would be considerably a lot cheaper than we've been paying for the last 20 years. I think what, the year before we got, I got in office, we were paid what, $105,000 for our audit? Yeah.
That's because it wasn't being done until...
That's because it wasn't being done right.
It wasn't being done until the end of the year, and then they come and take care of the whole...
Right, and it was all messed up, and this is, that's what this will...
The whole year.
Right.
Yeah, I'd rather see him stick with it, doing it this way and have things right.
I'll make a motion to approve the Stewart, Wovey, and Whipple contract for quarterly services at $1,500 a quarter for the first three quarters. Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Oh, is, is this a contract?
Yes.
Yeah. I better, roll call please.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Tom Fetter?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, moving right along. From the county roads, I got a work order for $9,400 for putting the chloride on all the, um, this is two applications, on all the, uh, our gravel roads. And plus, I have these four work orders that came in this morning. Number one is, uh, on Cottage Lane, we have three crossroad culverts that are bad, and they're gonna change all three for $14,465. We have Cottage Lane ditching, front of your house.
Yes.
So, for $14,316, which we have $10,000 match money, the county's gonna reimburse us $10,000 for that project. So it will net out costing us $4,316. And I wanna, okay, I'll, I'll back up. Uh, we have, uh, replacing failing drain enclosure at South Channel and Elm Street. The county's gonna do the crossroad underneath South Channel Drive to the river. That's because that's county road, but we're responsible for the collection drain and back on Elm Street. And those people back there, when it had rain all the way to Popular, it was, they had a lot of flooding there, and this is hopefully gonna take care of that issue. And that one's for $9,223. And then, uh, let's see, on Field Road, we got a crossroad culvert that's failing. That one's for $5,950. Now, all of these two, they're gonna qualify for county match, road match funds, so our real costs minus the ditching will actually be about half of this. I do have two more work orders, they're not as high priority, but I wanted to see how some of the things like, uh, we're doing on Holland Road, uh, they're gonna be paving that in a couple weeks, and, uh, see how, how we are on, on the budget, and then maybe I'll add those two, um, two, two more work orders in a month or so. If not, if, if we aren't over, if we use up all our county road match, then the, the two work orders going forward, we have to pay 100%. If I delayed a year, it would cost us 50%. And it's not about, not a, I don't think it's a high priority job, I mean, we could stumble through next year, um, but if possible, and we have road match left, I would, uh, bring it back to the board and get those to approve too. I just wanted to make the board aware of that.
So these four that you just talked about are $43,900, but it's gonna come in at, what do you estimate?
Well, it'd be, the other, the ditching will be $4,000.
Right.
The other one will be split in half. And, uh, and then the same with the chloride too, 'cause that qualifies for a road match.
We need to do these separately.
Well, I think we can do all four at once with the total. Yeah.
We have...
Or add the fifth, and, and someone have a calculator?
Yes.
53, 354. You can, I think you can approve all five work orders for the grand total.
I'll make a motion that we approve the total of five work orders for the amount of...
$53,000.
$53,354 with the St. Clair County Road Commission.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support for approval of five work orders from the county of the... of the previously stated work orders for fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-four and no cents. Roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Feder?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have... It's actually two parts, which probably split them up. First, we have the water. I got all the sand... Oh, here's the water. By the year... By January two thousand eighteen, the state of Michigan is requiring everybody to have for water and sewer collection system asset management plan in place. And basically, you can kind of can read the objectives and the overview and what it encompasses. But I did get a quote from Project Control Engineering, it's the township's engineering company, and for the water side of it... Where's my total? It's thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. This one, we're gonna have to be responsible for a hundred percent. There's no grant money available or anything, but it's something that... It's one of those unfunded mandates, and we just gotta, you know, eat it up and do it. But truthfully, it's... I believe it's a good thing. We've actually been working on it already. I do have a twenty-year asset management plan in place on the water plant for things of... For replacing, because, you know, how it works in a water plant, you can go three, four, or five years and no big issues. Then all of a sudden, holy cow, we gotta replace our filters, which is three-quarters of a million dollars. So, you gotta kind of plan. I'd rather take a little bit of money every year. I think we take about ninety grand and stash it every year, so it levels it out, instead of, hey, we're doing great, and then all of a sudden, you got, you know, a million-dollar expense over two years. So, that's what this kind of entails. The whole infrastructure, our water infrastructure, as far as I know, is in pretty good shape, except we do have a water line that's probably... A main that's probably eighty-five years old, basically runs from Nook to behind Johnny Legas. My initial plan is try to replace that in two thousand nineteen, because we'll be retiring debt from the upgrades on the water plant, and we can just roll that over into a bond to put a new water line across there. And at that time, it makes sense for us to put another feed to Harson's Island, so we have a second feed going over to Harson's Island, and roll that up into one job that we bond at that point. But truthfully, other than that, I think our infrastructure on our water side is in pretty good shape, so... Any questions, anybody?
So, as of right now, the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality is requiring the township to have this asset management program. According to the rules of the Safe Drinking Water Act of January... Well, it has to be done by January first, two thousand eighteen.
Yep, and we got...
Until they make another decision for us to upgrade the plan, or...
Right.
I mean, what now?
But to do that, we really have to start this fall.
No, what I mean is, how long is this gonna last before we're gonna have to do it again?
You'll have to ask the MDEQ.
That's all I wanted to get my point across.
I hear ya. Don't even get me about stormwater permits and the DEQ. So, we have this quote. Anyone have any questions, or I'll entertain a motion for thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And this will be budgeted for next year's budget. Actually, it'll be split between this next year, which starts in July one, and the following year.
I'll make a motion that we approve project engineering control, control engineering to take care of our asset management program for the water for thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Support? Okay, we have motion and support, and the motion is, in case you didn't hear it, that we approve the quote from Project Control Engineering for our water system management plan for a price of thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Feder?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, same song and dance, but instead of the supply, it's the return, stinky part. The sanitary sewer collection system asset management program. This one, if you remember, we are in line to get funded a SAW grant, sanitary asset something... Can't remember what the W is for.
Waste?
Waste, yes. I think it is. Anyhow, and we're scheduled to be funded next year, this will cover this a hundred percent, plus a lot more things. We did get the grants, a million-dollar grant. We have to do ten percent match. In other words, they're gonna give us nine hundred thousand, and our match can be in-kind service. In other words, a lot of it with the grant, our water department will be doing themselves, and the state will actually pay us to do it, and that will be our match. So, it's a pretty good deal. But this one is Project Control Engineering, and the quote was twenty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Project Control Engineer Asset Management Program for Sewer for twenty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, and like I say again, this will be reimbursed from a SAW grant. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Tom Feder?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the Nationwide Investment Discussion.
Yeah, this is just a little housekeeping issue, but it's a decision that should be made by the board. Nationwide sent us a letter, as you have in your packet, that says they're changing their investment strategy. They're gonna reactivate the three funds that are on the first page, and they're gonna change everything over from Dreyfus Appreciation Investor Funds to the Nationwide Institutional Service Funds. And if we are in agreement with that, we don't have to do anything. If we're not in agreement, then we have to alert them to that fact. So, if the board wants to make a change, or does not want to make a change, I should say, then we gotta inform them of that.
Do you have a recommendation?
Well, my recommendation, these people do it every day, we don't, and frankly, they feel more comfortable with the Nationwide Institutional Service Plan. I guess I would, too. I looked over the one, two, three, five-year, ten-year returns, and Nationwide seems to be better, but, you know, anything can change. They're experts at it. They feel that the change is warranted, and I would recommend going with their recommendation.
Now, on this last page here, Tom...
Yeah?
That we choose to opt out, they got a check mark. Is that what we're gonna do, opt out?
No, that's just... That's pre-checked.
If we're gonna opt out, we have to send this in.
Send this in.
Right.
But if we don't do anything...
We don't do anything, it'll roll over into what they recommend, and that'll be that.
And so, but we don't know anything about Nationwide? We have to just take...
We have the specifics of the return on investment, et cetera, and so forth, on the second page, and that's about all we have is for comparison. Obviously, Nationwide is recommending the change be made. You have on the six...
It's playing with us is four.
Well, yeah. The Nationwide account is just anything that the employees have to put in there? The township actually doesn't have any money in there?
Right.
No. It isn't our money, it's our employees' money, but we have more or less a fiduciary interest to make this decision.
It says the Nationwide Fund is replacing the Dreyfus Appreciation Fund Incorporated because it offers a lower expense ratio.
Yep.
All other funds are being added to provide exposure to new asset classes. So, in taking their recommendation, I recommend we let it roll over. Make a motion to do so.
The employees have the opportunity to opt in.
Okay, well, they...
This is for those that just decide to go with whatever Nationwide recommends.
Right.
So, we don't need a motion?
Right, no.
Okay.
We can make a motion to take no action.
Well, if we take no action, it's just gonna roll over, and it's gonna go according to what they want.
Okay.
I don't need a motion.
No.
Okay.
But if we don't want it to happen, then we gotta do something, so... It was a board decision.
Okay, a non-decision.
A non-decision, that's right.
All right. All right, now we have a review and approval for soil removal permits. We have to do these one at a time, if I remember right, don't we?
Yes.
Well, first one I have is a soil removal permit for Bob Bryson, three-two-seven-two, South Channel Drive, Harson's Island. Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Robert Bryson Soil Removal Permit number forty-seven dash thirteen.
Support?
Yeah.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Yeah. Does anyone want to ask Bob any questions? Be nice to your mother. Okay, we have motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Feder?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the soil removal permit for Westwood Lake, Phase One and Two Soil Removal Permit on vacant Benoit Road.
Make a motion to approve the Westwood Lake, Phase One and Two Soil Removal Permit number forty-seven sixteen. And you want the road in there on the vacant Benoit Road?
It's a lot... There's no address assigned. Okay, we have motion and support.
Support?
Motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Feder?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next, we have Silent Acre Farms Soil Removal Permit, forty-seven seventeen, is twenty-forty Golf Course Road, Harson's Island. Anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve Silent Acre Farms Soil Removal Permit number forty-seven dash seventeen, twenty-forty Golf Course Road, Harson's Island.
Okay, we have motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Feder?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have a soil removal permit for Blue Water Materials LLC Soil Removal Permit.
Make a motion, we approve the Blue Water Materials LLC Soil Removal Permit number forty-seven dash nineteen.
Did we get support?
Yeah.
Okay, we have motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Tom Kruger?
Yes.
Tom Feder?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. We have on our new business. We have public comments. Anyone have public comments? On what? Hey, John, should they just speak into this?
They could, or they can just use the hand help.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay, here, let me give you some slack. If you want to actually take it... Let me get it around my ankle.
That's all right.
Take it back there, and you can set it in the... Yep, keep going.
Okay, my name is John Cameron, owner of two-one-six-five, South Channel Drive. Last year, we had some road resurfacing down here, and from McCroy Road all the way around to one fifty-four was supposed to have been redone, and I haven't heard a word about it, and I'd like to know when it's gonna be done.
I don't know exactly when it's gonna be done. It is a county project. I've been in talks with them, and I don't have a date when they're gonna come back to address those situations or the parts that they didn't address last fall. So, I really don't have a date set yet, but they assured me it was gonna be done before that contractor gets paid.
Well, that's good, because it's been... You know, the holes are still there, the road is rough, it's a mess, and somebody ought to be on somebody's back to get this done.
Well, we've been following Citi, and they're gonna come with a microseal. At the same time, since they're over here, I was gonna have them do the rest of Williams and Donald Street.
Thank you. I just wanted to see that it was still on a tap.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Harry Michaelowski, I live on Middle Channel. I'd like to address the board on getting the DNR to do more. I'm not talking about them, and that's over there, but I'm talking about the DNR doing more for the island over there to bring the people over, like they did over on Bill Isle. This island has to be upgraded. You understand what I'm saying? And when the people come across from the ferry to come onto this island, it's just not attractive enough like it used to be years and years ago. We have businesses here that require those people to come, the visitors, and I think that the DNR should do more on this island than they have been doing. I have no problem with the Refuge, them people have their problems over there to do it. But there's no restrooms or anything for these people. You got one down by Brown's, and you want to have over here by the Refuge, but I think that these things should be updated. It can make this island, and people come on this island, it's something different and unique, and we need to bring these people on this island, not only for the ferry, but for the business people and for all of us. And I really believe that the township has to put some pressure on them. They did it to Bill Isle, the state did, they can do the same thing here for this island. This island has not been done anything. When Mr. Schaefer was here, he used to have the prisoners come in, and he used to go along and pick up stuff and do different things. We can probably do that, but we have to put the pressure on the DNR. They're paying or fishing license, they're doing all of this kind of stuff, and they come over. I thank the Lord that the officers and the police department are not touching these people and stuff like that, because if they're giving them a ticket, you discourage them. So many people are not coming out to this island anymore because of that, and I think that there should be restrooms and stuff like that for these people. Where are they gonna go when they come on this island? They park along the side of the road? Where can they go? It's miserable. And like I say, we did have outhouses and stuff like that down over here, but whatever happened to them, they tipped them over, whatever it did, it's just a... It was just a mess. But I'm begging the people over here, especially on this island, this is a beautiful place, and people are glad to come here. You understand on this island?
Oh, yeah.
And we have to put out that welcome mat. The ferry that down years ago is a mess over there. Your brother took care of it when they come across, the flowers are there. It's very appealing to come to this island. It's unique. It's very unique. We don't have this kind of stuff in Michigan anymore, and I do think that you folks need to put some pressure on them and get them in here and do this and upgrade that, especially down by the parking lots and stuff like that. Get those weeds cut down so that people and that can fish. And like I say again, these guys are gonna have to enforce that litter. If they stop by, talk to these people that are fishing and doing this, just tell them, say, "We're warning you, you leave it, we're gonna give you a ticket for litter. Take your license plate number, come back and check it out."
Okay.
Am I wrong? I'm wrong, but I believe that we need to do it. I've been here now thirty-nine years, and I love this island. I've been coming here since nineteen fifty-two and stuff like that, and I think it's a place that is so unique.
Thank you. Next? Why don't you grab the mic?
Okay. My name is Sarah Kilchowski, I live on Cardinal.
My name is Sarah Kilchowski, I live on Cardinal. Mr. Bryson, when I sat down to think about what I wanted to say, I did not realize how hard it was going to be to put into words exactly how I felt. Over the past month, I've watched in disgust as this whole ugly Dream Center scandal has come to light, and while many of us have looked for answers, leadership, transparency, you have only left the Clay and Algonac communities with more questions. I familiarize myself with the township supervisor's responsibilities. Nowhere, nowhere does it include pushing a religious agenda. This is exactly what you've been quietly doing. Despite the fact that you, John Stricker, and Irene Byrd contend that you were simply invited to meetings as private citizens, it has become evident that you, and especially John, have played a major role in facilitating this whole tragedy. You were elected by the citizens of Clay Township to do a job, and I have serious questions as to how you can be doing that to the best of your ability. If you were invited as a private citizen, then why did you send emails to both John Stricker and Bob Bryant, executive pastor at Woodside Bible Church, from your township supervisor's email regarding the Dream Center plans? If you were invited as a private citizen, then why did you list your township supervisor's phone number and extension in your response to John Stricker and Bob Bryant? How much of this planning has been done on the taxpayers' dime? At the end of the last meeting on May second, you and I had the opportunity to speak. I questioned why no one was talking about the fact that this would be a huge church system moving into a residential area in Algonac rather than just the community center that everyone keeps mentioning. You told me that you actually didn't know very much about this group at all. However, on March twenty-third, you sent a message through your township email account to John Stricker. It said, "With a little hard work and God's will, we are going to make this happen." Going forward, how can the residents of Clay Township trust you to carry out your duties as a township supervisor? I fear that I no longer can. And to the board, I do realize that some of you may have inadvertently been drawn into this situation due to Mr. Bryson's actions. I'd like to take the opportunity to say the following. The honest truth is that the Woodside Bible Church's Dream Center does good for the communities they serve, probably a fair amount of good, and we shouldn't deny that their volunteers are probably giving kind individuals. Unfortunately, the church does not make sense for our small town. We don't have the people to staff and receive services. This building would not generate revenue. Donors and investors, per the Dream Center pamphlet, would have to put forth six hundred thousand dollars to get the building where it needs to be, just where it needs to be, and then we would have to find additional funds to actually run the programs. In fact, Bob Bryant himself has admitted that we might not have both the funding nor a large enough talent pool for some of the services they've suggested. The programs that they propose are going to sound good to some of you, but the truth is that we should be encouraging our community leaders to be strengthening the resources we currently have at our local churches and schools. Perhaps we should be working with the St. Clair County Department of Human Services, the St. Clair County Health Department, and the St. Clair County Community Mental Health to coordinate better access to services for our residents. In many ways, it's far easier to just let a third party, the church, come in and run the show, but it comes at a great cost. Their product comes with a hook, and that hook is their faith. These centers are not merely community rep centers, they are a vehicle for which to promote their mission. To quote from their site, "Our mission here at Woodside is to help people know who Jesus is, to grow in their faith and in their relationship with Him, and to go and make disciples in our workplaces, our neighborhoods, the grocery store, wherever God puts us. We are a family on a mission, showing and telling the world about Jesus." We should not be allowing the religious agenda of a few community leaders influence a project that has the potential to so greatly affect our small town. In addition, this whole scandal has brought about a lot of hate towards the poor. Rather than focus on how poverty can negatively affect our community, let's instead become advocates for our lower-income families and citizens. We should not allow their households to become targets for Woodside's proselytizing. In many ways, lower-income households are already vulnerable. Let's protect them. A person's socioeconomic status should not dictate whether or not they have the freedom to seek out or not seek out a relationship with God on their own. Please stand with the residents of Clay and Algonac and demand answers from Artie Bryson, Irene Byrd, and John Stricker, and Joe Nugent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, can you spell your last name, please?
Yes, Kilchowski, K-I-L-C-H, V as in Victor, S-K-Y-I.
Wasn't that far off.
No. That's good.
I just call her Sarah K.
My name is Amanda Gujon, and I'm at State Street in Algonac. I recently met with Dr. Stricker, Mr. Bryson, Mr. Bob Bryant. For those of you who don't know who Mr. Bryant is, he's the executive pastor of Woodside Bible Churches, the executive director of the Dream Centers of Michigan, and an attorney at G.Marco Mullins and Horton, a law firm that currently represents the school districts in a federal lawsuit. I met with these folks and other Dream Center representatives on Friday, May sixth, upon the invitation of Mr. Bryson. I attended that meeting in the hopes of learning more and getting to the truth of the matter at hand. I wanted to be fair and hear out Mr.'s Bryant, Stricker, and Bryson, even though in my heart of hearts, I have believed that foul play has occurred in every aspect of what has led to the now imminent opening of the Woodside slash Dream Center campus. Side note, if anyone wants to know more about the information we've collected, I'd be happy to talk after the meeting, but I only have three minutes. At the meeting, I was assured by Dr. Stricker, Mr. Bryant, and Mr. Bryson that the Dream Center initiative was still very much in the planning stages and that things were very preliminary. No one, including Mr. Bryson himself, in any way indicated otherwise. A mere five days later after I attended this meeting, I received an email from Mr. Bryant, which in no uncertain terms told me that the building formerly known as Algonac L had been donated to the Woodside slash Dream Centers of Michigan, and a campus would open in a few months. In short, I feel very lied to. We, the citizens of Algonac and Clay, have all been repeatedly lied to. It's not a preliminary project when a job posting for a part-time pastor is put up in mid-April for an Algonac campus for the Dream Center. Again, with no communication to us or to a majority of the other elected officials in this community and Algonac. We've been kept in the dark and told to wait our turn for the truth, as though we are children who need to be parented. While we are not children, and our public officials are in no way our parents, insisting on knowing what is being planned in our community, to know the truth is not a privilege, it is a right, and one that has been violated repeatedly in this process. The truth is that this was a done deal for much longer than any of us thought. Months in the works of email exchanges between Mr. Bryson, Mr. Stricker, Mr. Bryant, and even the owner of Algonac Elementary, Mr. Pyrick. They are extremely telling, and that there can be no other way of interpreting these communications amongst these parties other than to believe that for quite a while, a discussion of a deal was orchestrated and then finalized with very little input, I'm sorry, no input from the community, and very little input, it would seem, from any other community leaders, including most of this board. The only input came from four or five of our community leaders, primarily Mr. Bryson, Mr. Stricker, Ms. Byrd, and Mr. Nugent, and four or five representatives from the Dream Centers themselves, who, if you read the pamphlet that they distributed, clearly know nothing of our town because their summary and their idea of where we live is extremely offensive and despicable, in my opinion. I would like to know who told Mr. Bryant of the, quote, "many impoverished families." I emphasize again, as I did at the Algonac council meeting, the poverty rate for our area is eleven percent. It is not astronomical. Our free and reduced lunch rate is not above fifty, it is not fifty, it is not even forty, it is thirty-nine percent. These numbers cannot be used to justify what is now happening. The emails exchanged amongst these parties dated this earliest February and continuing through early May describe meetings taking place which systematically laid the groundwork for this to come to fruition. It was all done behind closed doors, out of the public eye, and perhaps even worse, as I've stated before, out of the eye of most of this board and out of the eye of almost all the Algonac council. This project, it was said by Mr. Bryson, was gonna be presented properly once we, quote, "knew more information." That was less than a month ago. Now, in my personal view, the information gathering stage of any project would be considered a fairly early stage. That was not even remotely true. When I asked outright at the meeting, "Is this preliminary?", Mr. Bryson said yes, no wavering. Now, did he have misinformation? I do not know, but I do know what I was led to believe, to my face, that this was preliminary and not a done deal. We've been told that it was not an appropriate time to bring the public into the know that this project was in the works. Well, I now ask, what is the appropriate time? When the sign is erected? When more parking spaces are added and a traffic light is put up? When the building is modified to fit the needs of the center of the church? When representatives of the center and the church are even canvassing the neighborhood to tell us the good word? You tell me, because clearly you've had your reasons for not wanting any public input or even professional input from your fellow colleagues, from what I can tell, and I have yet to hear a reasonable explanation for this need or desire for secrecy. You have repeatedly stated that this was going to be something comparable to a YMCA. However, after even attending one meeting with the Dream Center people, I cannot understand how you could possibly continue to misrepresent this project in such a way. Lastly, I'd like Mr. Bryson and/or the board to honestly explain to me what exactly the consideration and fair value was given by the school district to the township when it quitclaim the property to the school. In reviewing the documents associated with the sale, I'm truly having significant trouble understanding in what way the school is obliged to allow the township to conduct meetings or hold elections pursuant to any written agreement. I read Resolution 2015-022, and I understand that it's written there, however, I don't see in any way how the school is going to be held to that resolution. If there's no written agreement, and it's already commonplace for schools to allow municipalities to conduct these activities, I use Algonac as an example where it has held its elections at the Algonac Elementary School until recently, and to my knowledge, without any agreement with the school for any monies or otherwise, then what was in good faith actually exchanged between the school and the township? We just want answers, and thus far, we have been given none. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Dave Brothers, eighty-seven, eighty-four, South Channel Drive. With voting season coming up, and our lovely voters that go into Little and Big Muskmoot Bay, a couple of years ago, I stopped the police department and asked them, you know, seemed that there wasn't a lot of protection after six o'clock, and I was told that the shift ended at six o'clock, and after six o'clock on those weekends, there wasn't any more police protection on the island. To look at all these people-
Not true.
Well, that's what I was told.
Not true.
So I'm just gonna make sure that going forward, this summer, as the voting season, if it ever gets warm this year, that there will be people or the police on the island when these people are coming out from the boats and walking on our streets and driving off the island.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Cheryl Baker, I live on Starville Room, Clay Township. Thank you for allowing me to speak. First of all, I'd like to apologize to the city of Algonac. Our superintendent, Mr. Bryson, sounded like he was the mayor of Algonac at the last board meeting, and it was mentioned many times who made him the mayor of Algonac. He blindsided everyone, or almost everyone, except for those involved, by announcing the plan of the Dream Center scheduled to open this fall in the former Algonac Mall. Rehab, Activity Center, Mega Church, Campus Retreat, we're really not sure what this Dream Center is going to be, because like a chameleon, it changes its colors anytime somebody complains about what it actually is going to be. But Artie Bryson seems to be its biggest cheerleader, and he seems to be singing its praises, and he seems to have a lot of inside information that he does not care to share with the rest of us. Mr. Bryson has attended several meetings with the players involved in this Dream Center. He's admitted to meeting with Dr. Stricker, Bob Bryant, the leader of the church, and an attorney with the school. Steve Pyrick, the owner of Algonac Mall, and a Woodside donor, Irene Byrd, Joe Nugent, and a few others that have been kept secret, and we have not been informed who the others were at these meetings. Using Clay Township email, vehicles, and time to take care of Dream Center business, we have proof that the emails from the township were used. Meetings have taken place on workdays. I don't know who's paying him. This Dream Center should be none of his concern. It is not in Clay Township, it is not tax-supported, it is a religious organization, a direct conflict of the separation of church and state. But he seems to be one of the cheerleaders. What is in it for you, Mr. Bryson? You say it's for the children, and I don't believe you. I don't believe you're doing this for the children, for Jesus, or for anyone else but your buddies and yourself, and I don't know what's in it for you. The quitclaim deed signed on this property was a disgrace. You should all be ashamed of yourself, forgiving away taxpayer township property. The only board member to question this giveaway was Mr. Horvath, who's not here, but I commend him for voting no and asking for more clarity on this matter. You didn't have an agreement, Mr. Stricker never addressed the board, but you all were right on board to sign away this property, without any public input, without any public meetings, without any say-so from any of us. Our property was given away, and maybe next week you can sign away the park, or the pier, or any other white elephants, or anything else you might deem white elephant by signing a quitclaim deed. That's very disturbing to me that you are able to do that. And by the way, that white elephant the school basically gave away for two thousand, two-hundred, two-thousand, five-hundred, was relisted for over one-point-two million dollars in January, right after it was sold, just like Fairhaven Elementary. The school sold it for two-hundred-and-forty thousand, and Mr. Steve Grasso turned around a month later and resold it for seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, we basically screwed the school taxpayers out of probably a million dollars or more. So the elephant was really not a white elephant, it was probably a gold elephant. Mr. Bryson, you're walking fine lines supporting and promoting a religious organization as a public elected official. You've given away township property with the stroke of a pen, without any chance for public input. Shame on the board for passing the resolution to give away property without seeing an agreement with the school, without any details, without even talking to Mr. Stricker. This Dream Center has been in the works for quite a while. Mr. Bryson's been part of this dream team. The Jaffa Coordinator was posted to the Mandason in April. April fourteenth, the same day they had their hush-hush meeting that was not supposed to be found out about, that Irene Byrd and Mr. Nugent attended. There was never a for-sale sign at the schools, they were done by closed bids, it's just a very funny, the whole situation, there's a lot of coincidences, a lot of connections. We can't really connect all the dots yet, but we're working on it. I only hope the truth will come out sooner rather than later. So in conclusion, I challenge the legality of this quitclaim deed orchestrated by this Clay Township board supervisor. I challenge the way in which our township property was given away. I think this deed should be rescinded and deemed illegal. I call on our community to demand transparency, honesty, and integrity from our supervisor and our board. The job of our supervisor is to serve the people he represents, not to serve a church, a religion, a school superintendent, or anybody else. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Alav, five-three-three-seven, Hardest Court, Clay. There's just a couple of things I'd like to know where the money went, the insurance money went from the-
That's the school.
-school? So you don't know anything about that? Okay. So it was, it went to the school, and not to Clay Township first?
Why would it go to Clay Township?
Well, we owned it, right?
No.
In July or August and November, it did. Okay? And the other thing is when Amanda was at the meeting, the pastor, the attorney of-
Woodside?
Yeah. Stated that it was going to be a church first and not a community center first. So is that what you've heard? I'm just asking you. Is this something you knew about, or something you didn't-
I'll comment a little later.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Deontolos, Acre Bay Drive. I hear a lot of discussion over here regarding this Dream Center. And this lady right here, she just asked you if the township had any ownership in this building, which you said we don't. So I guess the question I have, maybe you can answer for me over here for these people, why are we even involved with this?
Right. Right.
Why are you, as a supervisor, sir, involved with it for the township? Do we have that answer?
I'll give it to you a little later.
Because I, the consensus from what I've been seeing and hearing around town, and maybe this is where the township can get involved, is everybody's against this thing, and I would like to hear from the township board to say, "Hey, maybe we're gonna work whatever way we can as Clay Township to prevent this thing from coming within the community." So hopefully you'll do that for us.
Hi, my name is Cindy Kleffler, Gulfview in Algenack. I have to pretty much agree with everything that Amanda said. But I was wondering if you could draw some light to who the three investors are. I'm sure you probably have that answer. One was Steve Pyrick, and then there are two others that are anonymous as far as we know. And if you could please tell me what your role was, Mr. Bryson, in all of this? We need clarity on that. And for the meetings that were secret but not secret, that were just a matter of everyday business, that's just the way things are done. I'd like some clarification on that as well, as who was in attendance there? Nobody wants to say. We asked Mayor Byrd that. She didn't want to say either. We know that Mr. Nugent was there, she was there, you were there, Stricker was there, obviously, that Pastor Brian, I guess is his name. But who else from our community was there? Who from our community was there portraying Algenack as being so impoverished? Where did all this come from? That was, it was disgusting. It was...
Untrue.
Um...
Untruthful.
Not even so much untruthful, it was just...
I only fabricated.
Appalling. It was appalling to me to see the way that Algenack was displayed. Our kids are gonna be led to a path of destruction. Where does this come from? You should have been there representing us, speaking up for our community, what fine parents and grandparents and citizens we are. My children are all raised in Algenack schools, and I couldn't be more thankful for this community in which to raise my kids. My kids could hop on their bike and go down to a canal and fish without, I didn't have to worry. I didn't, I didn't have to worry. It was a buddy system. This parent looked out, this parent looked out. I never had any of that type of fear that something was gonna happen to my kids. They went, went their way. They always found something to do. They never lacked activity, never once lacked activity. I don't know where this, kids in Algenack have nothing to do, and the seniors in Algenack have nothing to do. I had three boys. I didn't have girls, but I know girls had a lot to do too. You know, mind you, I had girls at my house all the time that ran with my boys, and they were all busy. You know, my kids swam in the pool, they swam in lion's pool, we had our pool, they played outside. So, I don't understand where we got this reputation that Algenack is destitute, that I think that's what has me most angry. Where did this information go, come from? That this Dream Center, that's not a Dream Center, that's a community center, that's a YMCA, that whatever the hell it is, I don't know, but it keeps changing. I don't want to hear. I don't see use for it. And snickering coming from across this table, that's just as insulting.
It is.
Thank you.
Kelly Nader, Levant Arban. I'm here tonight as a concerned parent, resident, taxpayer, and more importantly, a voter in Clay Township. Clay Township residents and Algenack School District taxpayers seem to be the last to know many of these recent unfolding events before us, and we seem to be only finding out by luck or happenstance, bits and pieces, and others we find out after it is all a done deal, and then we are told that there is nothing that can be done to stop it. The events that have been unfolding over the past three to four weeks regarding the Dream Center are very troubling to me and many other citizens and voters that live in Clay Township. In this very short period of time, the story of what is coming in, this Dream Center disguised as a church or a community rec center, has changed faces many times already. When is it okay for the citizens and taxpayers to be the last to know about these happenings? When is it okay to support something on your voter's behalf when you have not even asked us for your input, let alone whether we agree with it or not? Do you not think it is important to ask us, stakeholders and voters, what our thoughts are before you openly support it? Artie Bryson, you have reiterated ad nauseam on the front pages in The Times, Herald, The Voice, and in public meetings for over three now, three years now, that you and your board would be transparent, you would have an open door policy, keep your constituents informed of things happening in our township, and that your word was your bond. It's truly not the case, and those were empty words and promises. We are the taxpayers, and we matter. Our children and property values for generations may very well be affected by these decisions that are being made by you, the new man in town, John Stricker, Algenack Mayor Irene Byrd, and Joe Nugent. We as parents and taxpayers should not be the last to know, and why were we not a part of these very important changes in our living environment? Sorry, I'm not a good speaker. You were elected to be our voice, not yours. Artie Bryson, as an elected leader, voted in as our Clay Township Supervisor. It is imperative that you come clean, be open, and honest with what is going on with this Dream Center, and also what is going on with this bridge project. I don't, and I don't mean telling us after it is already a done deal, that your hands are tied, it's too late. Why did you feel it necessary to keep us informed, on the addition to the police station? Also, what was going on with our township clerk, smearing our dirty laundry daily in newspapers, on Facebook, for everyone to see and hear, but this we hear nothing about? And you did not think that was important to share with us? Truthfully, as far as the bridge, it is most, it most certainly appears to me that it is happening. And if that is the case, you need to inform your constituents, us, of the fact, of the facts, and start instituting zoning guidelines, ordinances, nature-wildlife areas, parks. Get a plan in place for the development on the island that is sure to take place, and also for the mainland. This just waiting until Maroon and this bridge project calls all of the shots is speaking loudly where you stand on this ordeal. Please take into consideration your friends, neighbors, taxpayers, and members of the community that elected you to this respectable, powerful position, and the majority in this beautiful town that are not benefiting from these quick and drastic changes, but our lifestyle, our property values, our way of life as we know it may very well be changed. This is serious and warrants action by our elected leaders now. Why did you and Stricker not think it was necessary to get local buy-in and support for this, like Stricker did for the consolidation? This was no amateur move, a very calculated move. Enough of this hushed secrets that involve our tax dollars and very likely negatively will impact our children. Sadly, the common denominator, Artie, seems to be you. Why? Why was the Algenack City Council addressed before your own constituent taxpayers and voters were? The property that is the former Algenack Elementary was built, was built on, was a gift to our community, and you treated it like a white elephant, passing it along to someone else, the taxpayers only finding out about what you did with it by watching a city council meeting on TV. Shame on you, Artie Bryson, for giving away something that was meant for our children, all of our children, no matter what income bracket they are from. We demand and deserve truthful answers. I am requesting that you arrange a public hearing within the next two weeks where we can get just that, answers. We should be able to ask questions, get honest and candid answers. And then on another note, I've tried several times to review past township meeting videos that have been recorded during your tenure, and they have disappeared lately from the Clay Township webpage. Why is this? They appear, disappear, then they reappear. From what I'm understanding, they are now on YouTube, which you control under your name. Where is this transparency that you promised us, voters? Why are all videos of township meetings no longer available to the public, even ones that were there a year ago or five years ago? This is not transparent.
Cheryl Higginson, Gulfview, Algenack. I'm not really prepared to speak today, but I just had to say that I'm relatively new to this community. I moved here from Detroit three years ago, and I'm really, really appalled at what I'm seeing here, Mr. Bryson. You're snickering at your constituents. I came from Detroit under Kwame Kilpatrick. I didn't think that I could see anything as bad as that, and I'm really sad to see that in my new home.
My name is Gail Anthony, and I am from Algenack, but since we share a zip code, I guess I can talk here. I didn't come with a planned speech or anything like that, but I just wanted to let you know that, first of all, I moved to this area last year when I retired from Sterling Heights Walmart, I'm sorry. And I told everybody that I worked with that I was retiring to Algenack where things were beautiful, and we had the river, and everything was wonderful. And it is, it really and truly is a wonderful community. I have never met so many friendly people in one year as I have when I moved here. I'm one of those seniors, you know, ones that are sitting around doing nothing, that you know, just helping hands. I am a member of the Historical Society. I'm a member of the Friends of the Library. I attend classes at the library. I belong to two book clubs at the library. I volunteer at the food pantry. I volunteer at my local church. And let me tell you something, all these things were said about our community and about how we needed to have the Dream Center come in and provide hot meals for people and to provide canned food for people, because everybody is so doggone poor around here. Well, I work at the food pantry. We're open every Friday from 10 to 2. If you need food, guys, we're open. We don't have that many people coming in there. The most I have seen since I started working there has been 30 to come in and get food, and that's once a month they can come in. I also work over at the Lutheran Church where we have a hot meal on a Wednesday night. We don't get that many people there either, and the food is awesome. Come and visit us this week, on the 18th, we've got you. Anyways, you know who I haven't seen? Members of board, members of Algenack, Dream Center people, everybody who has an opinion about whether or not we need to have more food pantries and more hot meals served? Haven't seen anybody there. Why don't you come in and talk to us? We're the ones that are there. We serve the meals. We serve the people with the canned food. Ask us. Check us out before you sell us down the river.
Kevin Vektor, 7165, South Channel Drive. At the last meeting, you passed resolutions guaranteeing the minimum salaries for the next group of people that are going to be in those positions. At the time, you were talking about additional stipends. What would the maximum additional stipends be? I don't know how you budget for something that could be anything. Could you tell me what those would be?
That will be a board decision, and it's gonna be done in the budget process.
Is that behind closed doors?
No. We don't have any closed-door meetings.
They'll be discussed, and there will be a maximum...
It'll be set.
It'll be set.
Right.
So, it has to be a group, this is going to be over and above the minimum state requirements of their duties, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Michelle Landry. I live at 9595 Anchor. That's in Clay Township, by the way. I'm sure you know that. A document from the Dream Center said it had come to public to give a tragic picture of what they perceive Algenack to be. The truth behind all of it is that we are truly not as tragically touched by crime, poverty, and hunger and homelessness as they tried to state.
I agree with that, your statement.
Well, I'm gonna give it to you on facts. This is based on information that was dragged from research off the internet, based on government webpages, by the way, on statistics on our state and our county and our cities. Poverty. County statistics for poverty show that over the last seven years, poverty has begun a decline in percentages, showing that within the county of St. Clair, approximately 12% of its citizens are considered within the poverty scales, with the entire state of Michigan claiming an approximate 15% of its total citizens in the poverty scale. The end result is that the entire county of St. Clair is less than 0.1% of the entire state's poverty scale. That is hardly a reason to point the finger at Algenack, which is only one city in the entire county of St. Clair, and claim that we are stricken by high rates of poverty. The city of Algenack's crime rate is not nearly as bad as the Dream Centers would have you think. By reading the document, you would get the picture of Algenack citizens hiding in their homes and only choosing to go out when absolutely necessary to avoid the risk of becoming victims of some random crime. The fact is, Algenack citizens can walk their streets and go about their days with far less concern of becoming a victim of crime than that. Based on a database drawn from various police records, even FBI databases, as websites that prides itself on searching out things for people seeking to move into prospective neighborhoods, can tell you themselves that when you compare the entire state of Michigan's crime to that of Algenack, you'll find yourself to be a less likely victim of violent crime than you would in any other city. How much so? You have a 1 in 234 chance of becoming a victim of a violent crime in the entire state of Michigan. That means that out of 234 people, one of those people could possibly become a victim of a violent crime in one year. Now, when you look at Algenack alone, the percentage drops dramatically. You could be 1 in 676. That means that out of 676 people, one could possibly become a victim of a violent crime in one year. Considering that Algenack has over 4,000 residents, I think that's a pretty good statistic. Now, let's look at the other two cities where the Dream Centers are at. In Warren, you are 1 in 208. That's a shocking number to me. One of those people out of 208 has a chance to become a victim of a violent crime in that city. Remember that state average of 1 in 234? Seems like a pipe dream, doesn't it? In Pontiac, with a population of almost 60,000 people, your chances of becoming a victim of violent crime in that city are 1 in 104. Remember that state average again? 1 in 234? How does that all work out percentage-wise in the entire country? Okay, so let's scale it out in percentages then. Algenack is considered 37% safest in the entire country. Okay? So, let's compare Warren and Pontiac. Why don't we? Warren, 20%. Pontiac, 19%. I'd say 37% is starting to look like a pretty darn good number. It's not perfect, but per person-wise, this city's a hell of a lot safer than they're trying to lead people to believe. We're not some crime-plagued city. In this city, our kids can walk to the party store for pop and chips and not worry about being hounded by drug dealers on the streets, or homeless people chasing them for money. And as my mother said, we both came from Sterling Heights. On those streets, six-year-olds are talking about their girlfriends giving them BJs. Six-year-olds in this town don't even know what that means. Six-year-olds in this town don't even know what that means. Do you understand what that means? I moved from there to come here because this is not gang warfare in the basketball court across from my house. This isn't a kid, a teenage kid who got curb stomped for $5 down my street, or another kid who got shot with a sawed-off in his back by his Detroit buddies for a simple misunderstanding. In the end, Algonac is not the town, Algonac is a town that people come to visit on the holidays, a place where people come once a year on the Fourth of July to enjoy our fireworks show, the parade on the main strip, the tranquil views and the kind citizens, the great citizens, by the way, we're all really great. The way they painted us, you'd think that we were hiding in our homes, locking our doors and barring our windows, walking around with pepper spray in our purses, and paranoid at every moment we step out of our homes to go grocery shopping. When something tragic happens here, it hits all of us, and it's never anything anyone would ever think could happen here. Why? Because that's not Algonac. We consider anything that happens here that is violent or drug-related to be out of the norm. Why? Because it is. People here are not living with their heads in the cloud or in denial. We simply know our neighborhoods, and we know whatever we do, we can help each other and take care of each other here. That includes setting up programs for the kids to participate in, programs for seniors in food pantries, and learning programs at the Algonac Library. People with drug problems have programs they can participate in as well. The county medical programs offer counseling, support groups, and other types of counseling as well. We also have a local therapist. We're not plagued with anything but secrets here in recent months, and it's those secrets that are tearing our sleepy little town apart. People we trusted with our values, our needs, and our futures start having secret meetings with big businesses who are aiming to install a church here, who, self-admittedly, behaves in a cult-like fashion, where they aim to remove pastors from weaker churches and swallow up the remaining staff and members into their folds so they can keep their DNA in charge of the new adaptees. By the way, that's in their own documentation, not mine. In those secrets, it's those secrets and backpedaling that's been done in the last few weeks to dodge the storm from the local residents who are angry at those facts that's tearing us apart. You cannot stand there when a local newspaper uses your name and official title boasting about this opportunity, and then turn around later and claim it wasn't on official business. Well, if it wasn't, then why is your title being used? Why was the superintendent going to these meetings on school hours, using his own official title? That's giving the impression that those organizations, those official organizations, our city council, our Board of Trustees, and our school district are supporting those ideas, ideas that were never brought before us citizens. You also cannot tell us that it's just brainstorming when you already had a Dream Center pastor job opening, when the Dream Center's pastor set up a job opening before the building was even donated, before you sat there and told everyone on the board and everyone in the city council, even the school district, that it was just brainstorming. The ad was placed on April 14th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are they each copying each other's notes?
I think so.
You know, yours, hers, hers, and hers. Have you ever worked in a food kitchen? Have you ever worked in a food kitchen?
I served two years in the United States.
Because some of these people, if you've ever seen kids go home without food? This is ridiculous.
This is public comments to the board.
I know that, but it's ridiculous. These notes are all the same.
No, they're not the same. We all have the same concerns.
Order!
I've heard hers, hers.
You be quiet, everyone be quiet. This is public comments to the board. Thank you.
Well, that's just as insulting.
It is. I've heard it four times, the same thing.
Any other public comments? Steve, can you grab the mic for me, Steve? Thanks. Okay, that concludes public comments. Board member comments, please. Karen, do you have anything?
I've got a few things.
I hand it to...
One thing I want to know is, how are the garbage bags' sales going?
I would have to look.
I mean, do people, is there much sales of the garbage bags?
I see them around, yeah. I mean, I'd have to look, I can't pull the numbers out of my head, but yeah.
I bought a box.
Yeah. Have you bought a box?
No, I don't.
Oh, you should. They're good garbage bags.
And what about the lot by Johnny Legas? What's happening with that?
The DDA bought it. We're actually getting quotes, the DDA is getting quotes to put fence on the residential side and on the Pearl Beach Marina side, and they're all actually looking to put in one stall bathroom, unisex bathroom in support of the pier. That's a DDA project.
Okay, and then, here's another thing, and I've asked for this before. I know our budget reports are online, the budget, the annual budget, but don't you think maybe every quarter we should have these status reports on there showing we're 100% used in that line, we're 25%? That's not on there, it's only the budget. People can go and look and see what we've allocated to spend, but they don't know how...
I myself would like to see that happen also, it just didn't happen yet. Okay, thank you. Nothing, Tom?
Nope, I'm good.
The only comment I haven't seen, Justin, is regarding the planning commission, we're working on the recreation plan, it's moving right along, we're going to have a survey set out and to see what...
Public hearings?
Yeah, and public hearings to see, because we have to have every five years, that's what we're working on.
Thank you. Nothing?
No.
Okay. For everyone that's here that's concerned about the Dream Center, the Dream Center really isn't township business, but this board is here to conduct township business. I will stay after and talk to everybody if they wish on my own time, but, and after the board or the meetings adjourn. I will mention, it was brought up, some things on township business, the sale of, or the quick claim deed to the school. In 1952, the school, or the Clay Township owned one lot, one of three lots where the school, the Algonac Elementary sits. At that time, there was an old dilapidated building on that site. The Clay Township Board back in 1952 donated that to the schools, and in return, the school forwarded them to have a place for free meetings and free elections from that time forward. It also was in the lease, if it's anything but a school, it reverts back to the township. So, it was, I don't know, you know, when it came to my attention, we had a real problem. We cannot just give away township property without any, anything coming back to the township, number one. Number two, if we wanted to hold the school hostage and say, "You gotta pay us money for this lot," it could be argued, and fairly successfully, that that lot, at the time when we, the township donated it to the school, had a negative value because there was an old dilapidated building on it, the school had to tear it down, and the school had to bring in utilities, and from that point forward, the school did all the improvements to that property. The amount of equity that the township would have had in that lot was probably nothing or a negative equity at the time the quick claim deed. Furthermore, the existing deal that was made with the schools, that they would afford us a place to hold meetings for free and elections, they agreed to do that on the base, if we quick claimed the deed, that was the consideration back to the township, a free meeting place for the, for elections and any meetings we wanted to have in the school, in the school thing. And that was the same spirit, the deed was awarded to them in 1952, and this board elected to follow that forward, and that was fair and equitable compensation for the township going forward. I had advice on two attorneys, they both agreed on me, or with us, the board, and so, yeah, we just didn't give it away. We have, instead of paying rent for the gyms for the elections for this point, for how many years we use it, that's the compensation we're getting for that lot. And like I said, if we wanted to charge them for it, it could have been argued that our equity in it was zero, or maybe even minus. The videos online, we just started putting, they were never online five years ago, six years ago, we just started putting them online, I think in 2015, and on YouTube. Before that, they weren't online, and we started that. You said there's some disparity, I don't know, I'll have to check into that, I find it hard to believe, but they all are on YouTube. And as mentioned about the bridge, that's township business, kind of. The bridge is, they're still in front of the DEQ. To my knowledge, they have not made a decision, they were supposed to make a decision in April, and it's delayed. Everybody, I think all the Islanders know how I feel personally, and, but as a township, we cannot say the township is for the bridge or against the bridge until they come to us. Otherwise, we're liable for lawsuits. The township has concerns, and I'm sure everyone in this room agrees or knows that we forced the DEQ to have a public hearing, and I was the first speaker after the Bridge Company on that, and I voiced all of our concerns, and I think anybody that was there that doesn't like the bridge had those same concerns and a few more. I was very vocal at that meeting, and I think we stated our case very well. As far as anything else, the township cannot go out and say we're for it or against it anyway until they come to us. Otherwise, we're predetermining, and we could be liable for a lawsuit. So, that's all I have for township business, and like I say, I will stay afterwards and give you my take on what's going on with the community center. So, other than that...
Motion to adjourn.
Yep, got a motion, second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right.